In the Nelson County Schools, we continue to be guided by the values that every member of our community gives. Our students, our leaders, our parents, and our community. This belief helps shape our purpose. We begin a conversation at the beginning of the schools around gifts, and what gifts we as school leaders hope to share with one another. Our community backpack dates provide an incredible opportunity for us to connect with the gifts of our community so that we can continue to learn and grow together.
So, October 14th will be our first district-level backpack day. Schools will be participating in a backpack day September 16th, but October 14th will really be the first day we get to do that. I hope you all, if you find time, to be able to come to that. We would love to have you there on that day. I think there's going to be a lot of powerful learning take place, and we're excited about the work this year. So, thank you guys for what you've done to resource us. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is our operation consent agenda. That includes in this a treasures report, bills and claims, monthly financial report, balancing sheet, leave of absence, minutes from previous meeting, claim raise or request, overnight out-of-state field trips. And we all have been able to have these details previously. So, I will need a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Motion.
Mr. Jack made the motion there. I have a second.
Oh, second.
Ms. Bree made a second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Our next is under people, put people first. We've all been personnel notifications. Before acknowledges receive the personnel notification, there is no actual response. Okay, our next item is our fabulous and audited AFR. And that would be Ms. Owen.
You just hear from me briefly tonight. We went over the unaudited AFR at the working session. Unaudited AFR, the terminology is KDE's terminology. It basically means that we complete our books, we end our year, and we submit an initial report to them. Our audit is scheduled for September 9th, then they'll come in basically and reevaluate our information. The after the working session, or during the working session, I told you that I would have the actual MUNIS report available to you. That is what you have now, and I'm just asking for approval.
Lucky us. On that MUNIS report, yes, it's a long one.
We could go by page one if you prefer.
Oh, yes. Thank you so much.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. Ms. Di, do I have here a second?
Second.
Hi, Mr. Jeff, yeah, Jeff second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We have lucky next.
Yes. Lucky. Okay, let's see. Our next item, Ms. Owen, is the Section 125 Plan Administration.
At the working session, we reviewed the process that we've been going through over the past several months to reevaluate the benefits package that we currently offer our employers, our employees, and how we can offer that. It was a long process. After discussions at the working session, we went back and asked even more questions to ensure that we were selecting the right company for this responsibility. And I am making the recommendation that Houchen's Benefits Group be appointed as our Section 125 Plan Administrator, beginning with the fiscal year 2020, or the 2020 plan year. We did address the issue with making sure the employees are aware of what they currently have when they're making decisions for next year, and Houchen's Benefits Group will be able to provide that option for them in the system as well.
So, Ms. Owen, then for some people, I mean, 125 Plan Administrators, I mean, what, just kind of break it, what is that?
So, what that, currently the state provides our health insurance, and recently they have added dental and vision as well. So, they offer, they control the options for all of those. Schools then participate with the Section 125 Plan Administrator to offer other tax-deductible benefits to employees. So, disability insurance, cancer insurance, accident policies. It can be a multitude of things, but that Plan Administrator just assists us in helping come up with the best benefits that we possibly can in providing, and providing those options for our employees.
So, these are...
They're a third party, basically, that comes in and helps us coordinate those.
They're specialists in these areas, unlike us. Our specialty is education.
That's correct. And one of our biggest focuses this year was ensuring that we were not answering questions that we are not qualified to answer when it comes to our employees, that they actually had an expert to talk to about those needs that they have individually, because every person's needs are different. And having somebody that can provide that service for our employees.
And you can get a lot of the answers online.
You will be, this will be a primarily digital system, but also with the understanding that we have some employees that just aren't there yet, additional assistance. But this particular program that Houchen's Benefits Group provides will be a digital system to where you can actually go in, look at the, say you're looking at short-term disability, it will show you what it will cost out of your check before you sign up for it. Specific to you, not just a generic, hey, it costs this much per month. It will be specific to you. And it will also have everything digitally available as far as what your plan includes, what it does not include, how you would make the claim. Everything will be available to our employees.
Okay, there any...
Yeah, who's a hello letter?
Sorry?
Who'd just like to have a hello, hello letter and a good bye letter?
We'll be working with Houchen's Benefits Group on that process. They actually have videos that they send out to employees if you would like those. They've already created a lot of those that basically just walks them through, walks our employees through the understanding that they're a resource, they want to be an extension of the school district, and that they're available, and to just truly provide that support. And so, we would most likely be sending those out in the next month, because we would want that open enrollment process to stay pretty close to what it's always been.
And open enrollment starts...
It's normally in October. We typically run it at the same time as the state open enrollment process.
Anything else? Okay, I need a motion to appoint Houchen's Insurance Group as our Section 125 Plan. I'll make a motion. And Ms. Bree made a motion. May I have a second? Mr. Jefferson made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next, we have a policy first reading. I'm just being, Ms. Lee.
Good evening. And she did a wonderful job talking about our boxes, and to me, they're a tangible representation of our values that we have in the district and also the community ecosystem that we function under. And so, we have three core priorities that we've worked with in our community-centered programs for this year. And the first one is looking at our resource streams, and that connects back to energizing here. In particular, we're looking at policy design around grants and how we can better streamline our application process. We'll also be looking at the priorities related to community-centered experiences. And that, to me, if you take a look, is what does it mean to be a community? And so, we'll be looking at something related to professional learning, the policy connected to that. And then finally, in looking at our shared leadership, aligning our resource streams to provide better experiences for our students. And so, Carlyle, you will go back to the policies. We have two that we are presenting for amendment, and the revisions are based upon trying to provide opportunities, and the first one, to apply for grants. And this is modeled after several other districts in the state in which if we had a grant deadline that falls within a time period where we're aware of the grant before board meeting, it would give the permission through the superintendent to apply for the grant rather than waiting for board approval, and then it would then come before the board to still be approved at the next board meeting. We have a description there with the changes outlined in red. And the second one relates to professional learning and meeting that professional development requirement of 24 hours annually. And currently, the board policy has read that it was to be completed by June 30th. But looking at those shared leadership experiences, we'd like to move that date and amend it to May 15th. And the recommendation for that is connected to making sure that the experiences, professional learning experiences, are reinforcing the students that the teacher currently is teaching, and it's connected back to their growth plans. And again, this is a bid that several other districts have taken as well, and we're looking at that lead. And it also serves a purpose for human resources that with that June 30th date, if a person is not fulfilling requirements, what the ramifications would be, all within, changing the path, because it's a requirement that they have for 24 hours to remember the policy.
I think the reality is everyone's already completing them by night 15, with the exception of a few outliers. Additionally, we also have schools that are starting PD for the following year, shortly after school's out. So, this is really aligns what we were seeing in our schools already, and allows us to ensure that we're more pragmatic in our approach.
It sounds like that very rarely have we encountered a scenario where someone had not already accomplished the required PD around the 15th or much earlier.
And we have a strong tracking system so that we can communicate with employees early off, and to the day earlier, and there are multiple opportunities to find those professional development hours during the year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, under Invitational Row, we have the grant application.
So, with grant and board approval for the applications, currently we have six off the table. And if you look in the decision paper, you can see additional information, but schools are submitting for some grants to serve these schools. The name of the grant is listed there, and they're built for student learning experiences. And several are built around group pathways for agriculture or for expanding the nature trail, and we are asking for approval to write and submit these grant applications on behalf of these schools.
I'm trying to remember all these. Were any of them requiring matching funds, or were they just straight-out grant application requests?
Straight out, they are straight-out applications, and any match would be sort of in-kind rather than local ones.
Okay. I will need a motion to approve the grant requests as presented.
Motion.
Ms. Jack made a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jefferson made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Owen. O and M Specialist, time.
So, I get something new, something I've never done before, and I don't know in a while that we've had a need for this. So, we currently have a need for an orientation and mobility specialist. They are very hard to come by. We have Lorette Nuso, who is our vision impaired teacher. She has some extra connections that we currently have, and she has talked to somebody that is willing to come into our district and provide our students who require this service with a contract. So, I'm bringing to you today her contract to work with Nelson County Schools for this school year for orientation and mobility services.
And this is for a visually impaired student?
It would be a student who receives visually impaired services, yes. We have several students that receive those services. We have yet to have a student that needs the additional O and M services. So, this is the new piece of that. It requires two different certifications.
Okay. Then I need a motion to approve the contract for O and M Specialist to provide services to students who aren't eligible.
I'll make the motion, please.
She's going to make the motion. Do I have here a second? Oh, second. Ms. Bree, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Clark. Okay, under our student and shareholder engagement, we have our board calendar.
This is a longer conversation than will come back to each month, but at this point in time, the only recommended changes we have are around the December work session. And this is a recommendation to eliminate the December work session and eliminate that work to the 17th, largely due to the winter pride games and the work we do there for our entire community. So, the recommendation, we can come back to this conversation in our next meeting. I'll give a motion to that.
That's all, that work session has always been a challenge for years, because it also falls on the Christmas, community Christmas parade at the end of the day. I mean, a lot of us that have family members, whether it's a board member or someone that maybe is here in one of the meetings, and it's torn over, you're kind of torn between two different places. Now that we've also got the pride games, it just adds that added there to the piece of the challenge of having a work session on that first birthday.
Kind of, but we can come back to it if we need.
Yes.
Okay, I need a recommendation at this time, due to the timing of our pride games and the grave, the recommendation to cancel the December 5th working session with the options to review. Do I have your motion? Mr. Jefferson made a motion, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Di. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carried.
Not sure how it's going to play out this year, but I know that there's also, there was also discussion of corruption last year in the judging of the votes, and I think that's something we're going to have to be very focused on.
It sounded like we were accepting bribes or...
Clearly, there was.
I mean, but if anybody would like to try and bribe us with this year, or hot chocolate, or heated gloves, or...
Is Ms. Cole here? Did you hear what they're talking about?
So, Ms. Bean's trying to go to the back corner here, but she doesn't realize it. She doesn't realize that there's seven minutes left. Sorry, Ms. Bean. It's not raining anymore. As far as we can now get small down, so no one can leave without being completely impacted. It's like, you know, we have a problem because they don't know where, but he doesn't talk them all down. Her colleagues are laughing because they know it's true. So, we're going to set the timer for seven minutes, and this is really, just so you guys know, our board team has been in conversation for the past eight months around deep learning. And if you think about how, how does some of the decision-making, how does some of the decision-making occur, a lot of that really has been generated in some of our conversation. And I can assure you that if you stay for the next seven minutes, which we won't watch you if you walk out the door. If you stay and listen to our conversation, it really gets, allows us to continue to embrace this conversation around deep learning. So, we're going to have that conversation. If you feel so, and our board will lead that conversation, they may choose to reach out to the audience, that's really up to them, but we will begin this conversation looking at Chapter 6 of Deep Learning. For those of you that have Kindles on your iPhone and otherwise, feel free to take those out. And here we go. So, Chapter 6 of Deep Learning, feel free, anyone to take it away, if you think about the connections to some of our beliefs and the work we wanted to do in Nelson County.
So, I was going to say, as I was reading through it, something that drew me back to our work session, I think it was this past work session, I came in with some conversations that chased off and kind of led us on, one about the one-to-one initiative. And there is a portion of that Chapter 6 that talks about that digital learning environment, and it focused in on something we had a conversation about, and something that in my day-to-day work, I've been a firm believer in, is that the end goal isn't this thing right here. Whatever this device is that we provide to our students, I mean, that just happens to be the device that we've chosen to meet the needs. It's more so about what it does to their type of learning. And, you know, it's something that a lot of times people have a hard time, or can have a hard time wrapping their mind around, is that they think, well, I've got this, now it's going to change everything because I've got this. This doesn't change everything, it's the way that we use it and the types of work that we do with it. And there was another section that talks about the learning environment, and it was also a piece that we spent some time at our work session talking about, and they even referenced it, for those of us that are at least 30 years old, it would apply to, there's some in here that probably, it's a little bit harsh for them to apply to, but about the Encyclopedia Britannica 1980 version. And I see some people recognize that reference in there. And every year, of course, there was that annual update book that was bought to tack on to the back end of, you know, there was the 1981 edition, it was just all the new stuff that had been discovered that past year. But talking about how we really need to change the way our students view research, and it's not going to that library, looking at those books, finding that answer, but learning how to become a researcher. And that tied in very well with this concept of that digital tool, and how do we use a tool like this to help us hone those research skills, which is even more critical in today's environment because of all the information out there that becomes very slanted one way or the other, or just completely flat-out false. I'm sorry, Jeff.
No, it's all, personally, to say, what I saw in the chapter, it was reflected beginning of night with, would look to be the development of norms that we're doing, and the development of norms of, I forget listed, six of them, respect and collaboration, obviously, the trust of the community to give their input, and a little sense of risk-taking, making time for curiosity and creativity, is pours into that student having a voice, and that student's gift to shine, and I think we're setting the stage and setting them up for success, and when they do, they nail it like we were saying. I know that when one is relaxed and feels comfortable, and their voice is appreciated, that when you give command of the situation, as we're, our needs get to do, great things happen.
And then, Cam, I think so, there was one of the Foster Heinz teachers that talked about the young lady who nailed it.
Ms. Bean, she's still here.
Yeah. So, I couldn't tell if she had left or not, because she was standing back there and trying to miss her heel in the car. I didn't see the umbrella sticking out. But, you know, they hang a lot with what he's saying, that young lady was probably very comfortable with the environment that she was in, and because of that, that's why you had that, oh my, what did I just witness moment there? She took ownership of what she was learning at that moment. Next person wants to pick up, Ms. Bean.
Good news is, Ms. Bean's a K2 literacy specialist, and you'll be hearing from her later on this year. Pick on her.
So, we better be nice, because we don't want to have it later this year, right?
Page 80, middle way down on page 80, and I think Foster Heinz did such a nice job of embodying this conversation. It talks about making the walls of the classroom transparent, it's not just about redesigning the space, but requires that we take start the way that we connect with people inside and outside of the classroom. I think you also saw that through the backpack leader conversation. This relationship we're doing this year, where last year we said, okay, we're taking 30 teachers on externships, and now we're taking 30 more teachers plus 150 students on externship? And again, that's symptomatic of knocking down figurative walls, and I'm just so proud of that work.
You know, you brought up about the backpack leaders, and this is something I wanted to ask, I mean, of any of the backpack leaders that were up there. I mean, it's a very different position. I mean, I don't know if anybody's ever heard of another school district that has a position called backpack leader? I mean, I'm sure maybe the first time you saw that list, that you might have been paying yourself, so is that like the person that gets all the kids lined up with their backpack and making sure, you know, they're ready to go? So, the question that I would have maybe, that I wondered, what was your why? Why did that interest you? And what is it that you thought that you would be getting out of that position as well as giving to that position?
Hey, I'll start. I think, well, I came from Bullitt County, I taught science for six years there, and middle school, actually. And I had some friends that worked in Nelson County, and I saw a backpack leader position open, and I spoke to one administrator that had Nelson County, and I read about it, and you know, to me, it almost seemed like a little bit of a curriculum coach, a little bit of, you know, having your own class, your own group of students, and a little bit of as a gift showcase aspect of it. So, going from a classroom into a position of, I guess you could say more leadership, I guess, that interested me a lot. I loved impacting all my students at the middle school I was at, but becoming the backpack leader really gave me the avenue to impact not only all the kids, but any great ideas I had, or any great ideas I heard, I could share them with my entire school and really make a bigger footprint on the whole school rather than just, you know, my cohort of kids I had. So, and just, they can probably all attest to this, just by being there in the school this couple of weeks now, you really feel like a big part of that school. Now, you have teachers, you know, requesting help, you go to their rooms, you have students who see you around, you know, around the building, and you get to know the kids, even though you're not teaching them, except you're one class, you're not teaching them all day, they still know you, they see you around. One of the teachers across the hall from me said, you're never in your room, ever. I said, I don't pay to be in there at all, because I'm out with the teachers. It's really cool to see just different content, different criteria, and just be a big part of the school. It's been awesome so far.
Is that Finn Burton?
I do know Finn Burton, yeah. He works with my wife, actually, and he knew me through her, but I knew he was there. So, I contacted him, we talked to each other, and now I'm here.
You mentioned Mrs. Shannon earlier. My son came home one day and said, what's backpack leader? We talked a little bit.
That question a lot.
What? You get that question a lot?
Oh, yeah.
Well, and that's, and that's a little bit of why, asking the question of what the why is, because again, what is, what is a backpack leader? And trying to have a better understanding of the pieces of the puzzle that each of you brings to that. But, yeah, he mentioned, oh, that Ms. Shannon, she must have tracked him down later on, since I tracked him down and found out what he does.
Right.
And she was sharing with my son some of the work that you do, and that's kind of how it's...
I hope it was good, thanks, Al.
It was.
I don't know how Jefferson County uses everybody, but I know this is one of the rightest, as far as I know, as far as I've seen at KSBA and have read and have talked to other board leaders in the state. So, that is something that, you know, I'm glad we're down on the front. And I heard that noise in that.
Sounded like an uncle.
It seemed to be the rally bunch. Yeah, that's it. However, I...
I think you saw it tonight, you know, the power of the experience of then going to Cresso's and having that conversation. Like, there are academic, Megan said this, like, there are academic standards they covered in that conversation, sure. There's going to be things that they got out of that that we won't even understand for years, because they'll continue to think about it and reflect on it and grow from it, and I think that's the power of, that's the power of backpack, right? It's the power of those experiences.
Mr. Hill, is this what you have to put up with every day at home? It's my pleasure.
It's fun.
Good answer. The umbrella. That's right.
It's fun.
It's a lot.
Never a dull moment.
That's right.
Might could be, really. Something new every day.
That's right.
Have we done our book thing?
That's impossible for a leadership.
Okay. On the guest comments. First of all, thank you for attending our meeting. Any pleasure was... Any pleasure will represent themselves, we're limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five. Please step forward, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group and you, that you are representing. Being said, do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Jack made a motion. Second by?
Second.
Ms. Di, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the quarterback there. It was dead.